Well, being at five thirty, we'll call our regular council meeting on Thursday, March seventh, 2024 to order. We'll have roll call.
Hess?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Godey?
Here.
McClausich?
Here.
Oh, Gregor, sorry.
Stanford pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Item next, item was consent agenda. Approval of minutes, approval of receipts, approval of payments, correspondence, travel and training requests, community reports and reports from boards and commissioners. Anybody have anything they want to pull out of there? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve it.
Got a motion, I'll support it, second. Got a motion in second, we'll have a roll call.
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yep.
McClausich?
Yes.
I'll drop this down to number ten, items, appearances in public forum, nobody's requested to come to for this council? Okay. Reports from staff. You got anything with these?
Nope, I, I would just remind the public that we do have a Highway 100 project public meeting on March nineteenth, and that will be at the community center beginning at six P M. That would be the only thing that I would, that I would say or announce tonight.
May I speak on something about that meeting? Well, you know, for the public on the Highway 100? To emphasize they should come because I heard rumors that the state wants to make the Runnells, just like Mohawk. Well, you say no. I've heard this about the.
So the, the project's being led by St. Louis County, not the state?
Right.
But it's state aid.
It, it is state aid. Uh, so the, what that means is they're using funds. State aid fund is funded by the gas tax, they get distributed to the counties, they're free to spend it as they wish on state aid designated routes. Uh, so the state will review the plans for conformance with their standards, which is not bump outs are not a standard, it's just a design preference. Um, they're looking at whis speeds, design speeds, geomet- overall geometrics of the roadway. We have, staff has been engaged with, with Dick Lund, who's the project manager, he's been here a couple of times. My understanding, they have no preference identified yet at this point, so. That is a tool in the toolbox to, to slow cars down through a downtown area, but they've given no indication that, that is their, what they're trying to promote here. In my experience, working with the county on these types of projects, they, they usually enter very open minded, so. Often say they don't want those, right? Like, make that loud and clear, absolutely.
Yes.
And I think if they do, they, that won't happen, so.
I would add too, that this, on this card, you have access to a, they want a survey, they want people's input at this point, so I would encourage people to provide your input.
To go online.
Yep, even before the meeting.
Everybody should have got a card like this in the mail.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? We'll move on to reports from counselors. Councilor Godey?
I'll keep it short today. Um, the fire department had a breakdown of the rescue truck, uh, it was the high pressure fuel pump. They have it repaired, it was only down for a short time, but five thousand dollars to fix that. It, uh, that takes a big chunk out of their repair budget for this year. Another thing I wanted to bring up, you know, everyone's been talking about, um, ambulance services running in the red, and there's a lot of problem with, uh, shortage of money. There's a, a push now to, to get money, uh, to help out ambulance services and then find a long-term solution, uh, where they will help with the, the costs of the ambulance. Right now, this year, the statewide, the ambulance services are running a hundred and twenty-two million in the red. Uh, you, you've seen some small towns have eliminated or cut way back on their ambulances, and it's not a good situation, so that's really all I wanted to talk about.
Councilor Hanson?
Given Jen's library report, I would just add to what she said, that the library board still has two one-year positions that are open, so if there's anyone interested in serving on the library board, uh, please stop at the library, get an application, and make yourself available.
Thank you. Counselor McClausich, have you got anything?
Negative.
Okay. Uh, speaking of, I give it a little report, talking about ambulances. Luke and I attended the Tri-City Ambulance Meeting last month. Just for, uh, information, last year, the ambulance had nine hundred and seventy-two runs from White Lakes. Four hundred and fifty of them were, four hundred and thirty of them were in the city of Aurora. So, that's almost what, two or three runs a day?
Yeah.
For a little town, that's quite a bit. And they talked about funding because we're just like everybody else, uh, we're short on funds. Colvin Township was at our meeting this time, so they, I don't know what's going to happen with them, so. And then, the only other thing I got is this meeting on the nineteenth, I mean, everybody should go and, they should go online if they got questions and get that out there, so. That's about all I got. Mayor, leave anything?
Counselor House, I, I have an update that I, I should have provided earlier as well. So with the Aurora Industrial Park, we're going to be doing a public engagement process as well. So we've reserved the community center for April fourth? I think it's a Wednesday, it's a Thursday, and so it'll be very similar process to what the county's going through. Overall, the, the goal is, is to limit the rumors, right, and spread the, the correct message. So we're going to be doing an evening meeting at the community center. Uh, we also reached out to the school district, and we're actually going to hit up the lunch hour at the high school, just to get, spark some engagement at that level as well, so. Maybe they show up, maybe they don't, I don't, I don't know, high school kids these days, but. Very similar, trying to just spread a very positive message, this, this is what's happening in your community, so. We'll have a, we'll have a storyboard map, similar to the county online, you can scroll, and it'll have some details, so.
Did they start knocking on tree ejector?
They have not, that's scheduled this month.
We've got a meeting, put them next week, so. You just have to be on the ground by the end of the month, so. Thanks, Josh. Uh, anybody else got anything? Okay, we'll move on to report for mayor, he's not here. Old business, franchise fees. I think that's an item we probably want to table, because I know John's got some questions on this, and I think we should wait till John gets back here. He'll be back next month, John?
Yes, I'll be in person on April second.
Okay, I think we should table that, until John gets back, because he does have some questions on franchise fees, so. I look for a motion to table that.
I'm making a motion to table.
I'll support it. Okay, motion made, second, got a, do a roll call?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Okay, item sixteen-two, engineers, city engineer service agreement.
Uh, so, still working with, uh, city attorney to work through his concerns, so likely, my recommendation would be to table the meeting.
Okay. Need a motion for that, we spoke, need a motion to table the city engineering agreement?
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
I'll support it.
And support?
Second, I'll support it.
Okay. Got a roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McClausich? Wow, McClausich?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to new business, seventeen point one, C-MAR wastewater plant bid with Magni Construction. Got nothing in my pack?
There wasn't anything in there.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can give some background on that. So we went, as discussed at the five o'clock meeting, we went through the interview process last week. So for the C-MAR selection, we, we had a hundred point scoring criteria, um, and we, sixty of it was proposal based, so, so three firms submitted proposals on why they're qualified to do the project. We interviewed all three, and then scored the interview was worth forty points as well. And so, we got three proposals, um, Magni was, was the high scoring. So, um, like, like I said, at the five o'clock, all qualified to do the work, all fine contractors, I think that Magni just brings the most value to the table, so.
So do we need a motion to approve that? I'll make a motion to approve C-MAR wastewater plant bid from Magni Construction.
I'll support it.
Got a motion and a support? Roll call?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Seventeen-two, adopt and update fire department administrative policies. This has been all done over with by the city attorney, so it's all set to go.
I can, I can speak on that too, I guess, um, you know, this is not a brand-new policy, they've, they've had it in place, they just updated a couple of things, and Lindsay can touch, a, a big part of it was the earned sick and safe time. So I've had a chance to look at it, the, our attorney's had a chance to look at it, Lindsay's had a chance to look at it, and I think staff and everybody's pretty comfortable with where it's at. And they did multiple readings, so I, I think it's good to go and ready to go, if anyone has questions, they can certainly ask, but the meat and potatoes is just a couple of little updates. Another one, I guess, could be, they put in where, uh, we do not want to hire, um, fire department members who are neighboring communities, just because on a fire scene, it gets, since we do so much mutual aid response, um, who's in charge of who on these scenes? Who are you responding with and whatnot, so we kind of put something in there like that too. But for the most part, again, it was earned sick and safe time based, and, uh, we're, we're all good with it, so we're just looking to approve that tonight.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve seventeen-two, updated fire department policies.
I move we approve seventeen-two.
I'll support it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a support, roll call?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to seventeen point three, which, which is resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen, which is applying for. Being that we purchased property in the trailer court and then applying for money for carrying it, we will apply to prep for.
So I can give update, I can give updates on this too. One of them, we've already purchased already, it's in the city borough's name. This is for approval to apply for and receive demolition funds from the I triple R B for one of them. The other one, uh, it's just, it's hung up in the attorney's office. We did have Daniel Nygaard come in and sign and whatnot, but the county kicked it back, there's a, a typo in it, so I guess as soon as that gets signed again, we'll do that as well. So we're just kind of doing our due diligence here to apply for both demolition and removal of debris, and, and one of them's got a garage in it and some fencing and whatnot, so just two trailers, this number, we'd like to demo.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve demolition for a bright property, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen? Also move?
I'll support it.
Got a motion and a support, roll call?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
The item number seventeen-four, which is demolition of bright property, resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, which is the same thing as what we just approved, but a different piece of property, so I would make the motion to approve that one too.
I'll support it. Roll call.
Sorry. I'll support it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes. So I'd just like to add on to that, I appreciate Luke, uh, moving forward with that, uh, in a, a quick fashion to, to get rid of a couple of those bad looking buildings, so nice job.
You bet, and I guess, um, I, I can't see who's there for attorney now, but if you could bring that back to your office and see, I know Rhonda Zeponcik and Herman Zeponcik had to find that paperwork and Daniel again, if you guys could just check in and try and move that along, so we could get that cleaned up with the county, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, Lucas, thanks for that, uh, this is Joel Lewicki from Clausmo Patch and Carney. I know that, uh, staff is working on obtaining those signatures and resubmitting it. I know, as, earlier this week, they were working on it, so, uh, I, I will make sure that that gets moved along. It, it has to do with the previous grand tour to who the city was getting it from, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Hey, Richard, I have one question on that corner house on Fourth, uh, Fourth Avenue or First Street? That's the counties, but they're not moving up, aren't they, I thought it was going to be torn on?
That's something we should address when you get back, Luke, is that house on the corner of Fourth Avenue by the school, they tore the siding and stuff off of it, and then it's, it's just been sitting there, and that's a county project, so. It's kind of a sight, kind of a eyesore.
Yeah, when, yeah, right. When you come in, when you come in my office next week, Richard, we can sit down and chat about it, and I'll, I'll reach out to them and kind of find out.
Okay, sounds good.
Where that's at.
Thanks, Luke. Okay, seventeen point five, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, investment designation for E.R. Water System.
Okay, I'll take that too, um, so we reached out for, uh, is this the, is it, Lindsay, can you correct me on this one, because I don't have an agenda for it, I mean, is this the signature, or is this the funding?
Um, this is the invested earnings in its Lers portfolio to match the I triple R five hundred thousand community infrastructure grant.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, uh, to be fully funded for the water plant project, we need, and to receive the PFA monies, um, we were, we wrote a grant to the I triple R B for one million dollars, because they're up against the cap right now, they do not have a million dollars to give our project, they have five hundred thousand dollars. So what we're going to do right now is, uh, we've, we've taken some of our earnings, and we just earmarked it for five hundred thousand dollars to match the I triple R B, so we get that full million. I will be writing for a phase three, uh, grant that I'm hopeful that we'll be able to receive in the fall, so this, this may be just a paper move right now, if we got to dip into it, you know, in the fall, we could hopefully receive those monies and, and re, reapply it. So that's all it is, is we're just paying five hundred thousand dollars of our ear, invested money is going to be earmarked for this water plant project, we're fully funded. I'll take questions if you have them.
Anybody else have any questions on that? So I need a motion to approve resolution.
Look, it's John. Uh, just a real quick question, so is that just money coming out of the general fund and the five hundred thousand that's invested?
Yeah, so right now, that's general, general fund monies, um, we, yep, we, so we've, right now, currently, we've got two point eight five invested, um, six hundred thousand of that is, uh, for the downtown beautification grant, um, another two point two or, and change is, uh, some of it was our old Wells Fargo investments that we had that we moved over, and then we had money in the bank that we just rolled over to try and get some more investment earnings. So, one million of that, I don't want to confuse it and muddy it too much, but one million is sitting in, in CDs right now, that we can't really touch and move around to get a little better investment rate, and then there's another million that's just kind of sitting in bonds. That's going to stay there in bonds, it's still going to collect everything that it's collecting now, it's just that we're putting it in a side account that's got an actual designation, so it's just going to sit there specifically designated for it, and that's all we could touch it for. Once we don't need them again, then we'll just move it back over, and then it'll just keep, keep sitting with the rest of the general fund dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So it's just collateral now, actually?
Uh, yeah, so that's, that, again, that's just general fund dollars that we have in our savings account, that we've decided to invest to try and get that, that five percent rate that we're looking for. So it's, it's, it's savings account money for, it is money for a rainy day, but we feel like we've got enough in there that, you know, for the next six months until we hopefully get this money back, it's a pretty safe move to get the project moving.
Any other questions? I don't look for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
I move we adopt the resolution.
I'll second it. We got a motion and.
I'll second it.
Okay. Time be late. Uh, roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one has to do with approving and authorizing execution of contracts for construction of certain facilities for the East Plains Joint Water Project.
Yep, so this, uh, we, currently, everything Aurora has been involved with is being the fiscal agent or the fiscal manager of this project. The joint powers agreement was geared towards financing, and now that we've actually moved ahead in the next phase and we're doing construction, um, Mia Thibodeau, the attorney from Freiberger, had just suggested that, uh, the city of Aurora should designate somebody to sign contracts on the entire city council's behalf. So what this is saying is that the, you guys are authorizing the mayor to sign contracts for the water board to represent the city, that's what this is, the designation, making one person, um, signing for the entire city. I'll take questions if you have them.
No questions, I'll look for a motion to entertain resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll support that.
A second? Roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
We lost him.
McClausich, say it one more time for the record, please.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to seventeen point seven is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, recognizing the need to update its wastewater system and identify deficiencies of its existing system.
Yeah, I can take this, so what this is, this is a resolution, so I mentioned before for First Avenue West, we got it on the clean water drinking fund, uh, for the sanitary sewer replacement, so we got that on the project priority list, or the application submitted. And so what this is, is a resolution, we had to write a report supporting the need for that project, and so this is the report, or resolution accepting that report to support that application. Nothing's etched in stone, there's no financial obligation associated with the, getting it on the PPL or anything like that, so, um, just a formality.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two for West First Avenue replacement. I'll support it. Got a motion and support, roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Hey, Richard, I've got a question, are you, are you going to do that this year? I heard that they might not, uh, Fourth Avenue.
It's programmed for twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, okay. Trying to change some funding with the water plant.
Yes, that's what I heard.
You were right. Seventeen point eight, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, purchase parcel one hundred dash zero zero eight zero dash zero zero four twenty.
Again, so this is the twenty-one acre, uh, parcel behind Canuti Drive, um, this would be with the intent of housing, um, again, that would be up for discussion as to what kind of housing we wanted to put in there. There's, we do not have a purchase agreement that, right now, you're just authorizing up with two seventy thousand dollars to be negotiated on that. If we get a purchase agreement, we would work through it and, and, uh, we would just, we'd just find that behind this thing afterwards. Our intent would be to hopefully close on the twenty-second of March, um, so we can move this thing along pretty quickly. And then again, the intent would be to take the seventy thousand dollars and then leverage that with the grant application for the I triple R B, um, to, to go on to phase one and phase two work to get this thing ready to go, so. That's, I'll take questions if you got them after that. Oh, I, actually, and secondly, um, the motion should include the use of A R P A funds. Again, that, those are COVID dollars, they need to be exhausted by the end of twenty twenty-four, or at least designated by the end of twenty twenty-four, so this would exhaust our A R P A or COVID funds, and if we did go up to that full seventy thousand dollars, we would take about four thousand from the general fund or, or so. So the motion should include the use of A R P A funds and general fund dollars.
I did specify that in the resolution as well, Luke, so it should be in writing that we could submit to our accounting clerk.
Perfect.
So I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion, we've approved the resolution, using the ARPA funds and general funds as needed.
And I'll second with the addition that it'll be used, remaining A R P A funds and the motions. Roll call vote?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Seventeen point nine, charitable gambling request, Masabi East Schools. Put an application in for Masabi East Schools, community head, person applying is Katie Felk, briefly, it's a raised funds, let's see, funds would be used to sponsor Minnesota East, Masabi East Community Education Creative Art Classes. These classes are free, after-school craft or baking classes for elementary schools, students ranging from pre-kindergarten to ninth grade. They cover a wide range of activities from cupcakes and cupcake decorating, tie-dye projects and so on. So looking for a five hundred, it's, classes free and open to all students of all abilities, they're looking to, for a five hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to donate to that.
I'll second it. Roll call?
Godey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Seventeen point one zero is, uh, from the Knights of Columbus, requesting permission to hold charitable gambling bingo game at Holy Rosary Church Hall on Sunday. on Sunday, April 7th, 2024. The proceeds will be used for council's charitable programs. This is something they do once or twice a year, so. I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll support that.
I'll support that motion.
Got a motion and support? Roll call?
Cody?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
That puts us down to 17.11, is other. Anybody else got anything else?
I will just make an announcement that the regular special meeting will have to be moved due to that public engagement meeting at the community center on the 19th. So, a notice of date change will go out tomorrow, but it will be reflected in the minutes that the next meeting will be on Thursday, March 21st.
Okay, anything else? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, we adjourn. I'll support it.
Okay, roll call.
Cody?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
McClausich?
Yes.
Thanks, Luke.
You're welcome, everyone have a good evening.
You too.